Are you ready with the recording? Okay. It is now, it's now 7:04 and I'm convening to open session and calling to order the regular Board of Education meeting for Indian Prairie School District 204 on Monday, March 24th, 2025. Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Gents.
Here.
Mr. Carubis.
Here.
Ms. Fosdick.
Here.
Mr. Rising.
Here.
Ms. Demming.
Present.
Ms. Jane.
Here.
And Ms. Donahue.
Here. We have a quorum. Ms. Jane, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next regular board meeting will be held on Monday, April 7th. We have four board salutes tonight and we'll start with Ms. Jane.
District 204 students advanced to Nationals in the Reflections Art Program. The board salutes the District 204 students who are advancing to the national level of the PTA Reflections Art Program. Mishka Butnayek from White Eagle Elementary, Anisha Campbell with two submissions from Crone Middle School, and from Matia Valley High School, Asvi Chokshi, Eden Kim, Varshen Rajah, and Ronak Saxena, and Eden Saleem. Congratulations to these students on these, on this astounding accomplishment.
Ms. Gents.
Warriors Hockey Club captures fifth consecutive state title. The board salutes the Warriors Hockey Club for capturing their fifth consecutive state title for the combined Blackhawk Cup. The Warriors Hockey Club, which consists of players from Wabonzi and Matia Valley High Schools, won in double overtime by a score of three to two over Buffalo Grove, Hursey and Wheelene Stampede Hockey Club. Congratulations on this stellar accomplishment.
Ms. Fosdick.
Marketing Educator of the Year Award for Illinois DECA. The board salutes Niqua Valley Business Education Teacher Beth Newth for being named the Marketing Educator of the Year Award for Illinois DECA. This award recognizes educators who have demonstrated outstanding leadership with the state association and their local community. Honaries exemplify the four key points of the DECA Diamond: vocational understanding, social intelligence, civic consciousness, and leadership development. Congratulations Beth on this well-deserved recognition.
Mr. Rising.
Matia Valley Newspaper named finalist for Pacemaker Award. The board salutes Adam Page and the Matia Valley Online Newspaper staff of the Stampede for being named a Pacemaker finalist by the National Scholastic Press Association. They are one of 34 finalists in the country and one of just three in Illinois. The award shows how hard the students have worked to tell their stories of Matia Valley. This is the fifth time Matia Valley Journalism students have been Pacemaker finalists, four times for their online newspaper, and once for their print magazine, The Stampede. Congratulations Adam and the Stampede staff and go, go Mustangs!
Thank you. Applause for all of these great accomplishments. And we would like to have the Matia group come up here for a photo. Next, we will have our student representative report by Sohn Ha, Matt Penchal from Matia Valley High School.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. My name is Sohn Ha Penchal and I'm the Executive Board Representative of Matia Valley High School. And as always, it's an honor for me to be here with you all today. Today, I'd like to start off with general updates. The speech team sent four students to state and had a fourth place finisher. Students in BPA competed at state two weekends ago and they had four students qualify for Nationals. Science Olympia took second place at regionals and is sending 15 students to state. One of our robotics teams won a state design award and they were invited to the world championships. Our students in DECA sent 47 students to state and had, and have had several top 10 finishers, a third place in sports and entertainment marketing, a fourth place in principles of marketing, and a first place in financial services. Go Mustangs! Um, next I would like to move on to athletics. Ashley Baseman, the first 204 female to make it into IHSA state wrestling. And Bridgette Anderson qualified for state gymnastics. Next, fine arts. Our music department showcased their hard work and talents all month with many concerts. And the MV Music Department will travel to Orlando, Florida over spring break to perform and participate in workshops at Disney World. Choir and orchestra students will perform at Advent Health Waterside Stage in Disney Springs, while the marching Mustangs will be featured in a parade at Magic Kingdom. Students will collaborate with the Disney musicians and, and conductors in a recording studio, experiencing firsthand what it's like to perform a soundtrack, a soundtrack for a Disney film. Thank you all for your time this evening. I look forward to updating you all in the future, in the future. And as always, go, go Mustangs!
Thank you. Okay, tonight, our school spotlight is actually three schools, Young, Brooks, and Granger Middle School. Erin Rodriguez, the principal at Young, Carol Betzel, principal at Brooks, Al Davenport, the principal at Granger are going to give us some insights tonight.
We can share.
All right. You're not strong enough. Yeah, I guess not. All right, well, good evening, board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I am Al Davenport, principal of Granger.
Erin Rodriguez, principal at Nancy Young Elementary.
Carol Betzel, the principal at Brooks.
And we wanted to take a moment to share a mentoring program that has been really excellent at fostering positive peer relationships, connecting middle school students with some of our elementary students at our feeder schools in some very meaningful ways. At its core, this program offers Granger students the chance to become role models for younger students, showing them a path forward and inspiring them to dream big. Simultaneously, students from both Brooks and Nancy Young are provided with an invaluable opportunity to connect with someone just a few years ahead of them and at Granger, building both a sense of possibility and a sense of community and increasing overall student competence.
But the benefits extend beyond just the students. The elementary students also begin to build relationships with middle school staff, creating a bridge that helps them feel more comfortable and supported as they transition into middle school. These early connections are crucial in easing the challenges that come with such a significant educational shift. As we know, too often, the power of positive relationships is underestimated, but as Dr. James Comer said, "No significant learning occurs without a significant relationship." This program is about creating a culture of support, trust, and mentorship that extends across our schools. It's about helping our students feel seen, valued, and empowered, both as learners and as individuals.
By building these relationships early on, we're laying the foundation for stronger, more connected communities within our students and schools, where every student feels that they have a role model to look up to and a community to absolutely support them. I truly believe that programs like these help our students thrive both academically and personally. Lastly, it is extremely important to note that this program would not be possible without the incredible work of our interventionists. Peggy Schmidt at Granger Elementary, Stephanie Tufexis at Nancy Young, and Jennifer Stanek at Brooks Elementary, thank you for your hard work towards this program.
And we know that a picture is worth a thousand words and that I've been told we're limited to five minutes. We thought it best to let the pictures speak for themselves, so if you would take a look, this is some of the highlights from our mentoring program this year. That is it.
Sounds like a fantastic opportunity for the kids both in elementary school and the ones in middle school to, to connect and build relationships and that sounds great. So thank you so much for putting together this.
You're most welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, now it's time for public comment and 60 minutes is allowed. Each person is limited to three minutes. When addressing the board, we ask that you respect the confidentiality and safety of our students and school district personnel. We also ask that those addressing the board be cognizant that this is an open meeting and is available to all age groups and as such, ask that you consider who the audience members are this evening and keep comments age appropriate. Public comment represents the voice and opinion of the speaker. There will be no feedback from the board members during the meeting, but follow-up will be provided by an administrator as appropriate. Although this is not required, it is helpful for the board to know whether the comments and concerns we hear are being raised by residents, so we ask that you state if you live in the district and if you currently have children in our schools. Tonight, we have four signups, but I believe there's three speakers. Is that correct? Cause, yeah, okay. So the first speaker is Diane Brown-Gist.
Welcome.
Good evening, board members, administrators, and community members. My name is Diane Brown-Gist and I'm a resident of the city of Aurora, Naperville Township and Indian Prairie School District. I had two adult sons who have graduated from the school district. I've been here in the area for 30 years. I'm here today to urge Indian Prairie School District 204 to take a firm stance against the practice of ticketing students in school. The evidence is clear. Ticketing students for minor infractions is an unfair and harmful disciplinary practice that exacerbates inequities, disrupts education, and places undue financial burdens on families. Each year, thousands of Illinois students receive tickets for school-based behaviors that in previous generations were handled by school administrators. A comprehensive investigation was done by ProPublica and the Chicago Tribune and found that between 2019 and 2021, over 11,800 tickets were issued to Illinois students, 93 in total at IPSD 204. Matia, 31. Wabonzi, 43. Niqua, 19. Alarmingly, black students were twice as likely to receive tickets as their white peers. Why ticketing must end? Number one, it forces students to miss class. Students must leave school to attend municipal hearings disrupting their education and creating new forms of expulsory discipline. Two, it fails to address misbehavior or substance use. Studies on adolescent behavior and addiction treatment suggest that punitive measures like ticketing do not deter substance use and may instead encourage a more secretive behavior. Three, it places us an unjust financial burden on families. Fines range from $100 to $750 and can be unmanageable for families and many of them who particularly might be living from paycheck to paycheck. Fourth, it pushes students into a system designed for adults. Unlike juvenile court proceedings, municipal ticketing hearings are public, offering very legal protection for youth and potentially leading to lasting consequences in their futures. Legal and legislative considerations. Illinois law SB 100, Public Act 0990456, already prohibits schools from issuing tickets as fines and disciplinary measures. However, some schools circumvent this by referring students to police officers who then issue the tickets. A 2024 investigation by the Illinois Attorney General's Office confirmed that this practice is illegal. New legislation HB 2502 and SB 2519 has been introduced to explicitly ban ticketing in schools. I urge Indian Prairie School District 204 to take a stance and support the passage of SB 2502.
Ms. Donahue, the speaker time has ended.
Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you so much. Thank you. The next speaker is Krista Small.
Thank you, President Donahue and members of the Board of Education for this opportunity to speak on an issue that is important to me and our community. My name is Krista Small. I have lived in Naperville for 12 years and have two students in District 204, one at White Eagle Elementary and another at Wabonzi High School. Our family has encountered some challenges within the school system, specifically in the areas of unequal consequences for similar student behaviors and lack of school administration response to ongoing bullying. However, in the face of that, my husband and I still appreciate the district and the broad scope of opportunities our children have gotten. We also sincerely appreciate what this board has done, supporting inclusion groups, hiring Dr. Tally, and state leadership with the district's equity belief statement. We know that you are leaders, so we are confident that you can also lead the district and the state and the issues that we are raising tonight. Hearing about the case of Amara Harris at Naperville North High School in District 203 and the horror she experienced deeply disturbs me. Amara was accused of stealing an Apple AirPod from another student when the reality was a simple mistake because AirPods do look alike, and she was ticketed and prosecuted by the SRO and the city of Naperville. It affected her life in many ways. She had to stay close to home for court appearances and couldn't initially go to the college of her choice. She spent six years battling the case to ultimately be found not guilty last year, all over a hundred dollar device. Her family was intentional and spent more money than the AirPods themselves simply in the service of truth and protecting her name, but many students cannot afford this luxury. In this district, IPSD 204, ProPublica has reported that 93 tickets were issued to students between 2019 and 2021. While conflict is natural and consequences and mediation may be necessary, criminalizing minor infractions with this ticketing process can have far-reaching and harmful consequences to a student's future. Studies have shown that interaction with the criminal justice system at a young age directly impacts a child's self-perception and has the potential to reinforce beliefs of personal inadequacy and low self-esteem. We must not encourage the criminalization of students in situations where they are simply engaging with their peers. SROs and municipalities should not be involved in some incidents. Their impact should be reserved for school and student safety. For all of these reasons and more, Illinois HB 2502 and SB 1519 were introduced to end this practice. I hope you will express your support for these bills and commit to ensuring this practice is not applied to students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. The next, the next speaker is Panya Yarber King.
Good evening, President Donahue and all members of the District 204 School Board. My name is Panya Yarber King and I'm a resident of Naperville with one child in District 204. I'm a former administrator from the Houston Independent School District and Atlanta Public Schools. I'm a former school board member from the state of Georgia and a graduate of the Broad Residency in Urban Education. I moved to Naperville in 2021 because of all the great things I heard about the schools. Not only did I hear those great things, but I've been able to experience it firsthand now that my daughter is here in 204. Like Krista who spoke before me, I appreciate the opportunities this district has afforded my daughter and many other children. That said, there are some issues. The Illinois State Board of Education found that in 2019, black students were almost four times more likely to be disciplined than white students in Districts 203 and 204. Studies show that black students are disproportionately impacted by disciplinary racial bias. Black and minority children can feel the effects of this bias and can experience long-lasting impacts on their lives and well-being. We saw this in Naperville with the Amara Harris case. I'd like to pivot. After I had my daughter Ruby, I noticed something different when family and friends would call to check on me or visit me. When they called, they always asked about my child first, not me. Before they wanted to know anything about me, they wanted to know, "How is the baby?" Messiah warriors have a greeting in their culture that simply asks, "In lieu of hello, how are the children?" The traditional response is, "The children are well." I'd say that we can all agree that the state of our children tells a lot about where we are as a community. Here's the truth. If even one of our children is experiencing an unfair practice, then all is not well and we are not well. The Illinois State Board of Education has advised against the use of student citations. The governor has spoken out against it and legislation to end this practice is actively moving forward. Now is the time for our district to lead with intention and meaningful action. You, the District 204 School Board, are leaders. You are trailblazers. You brought us the very accomplished Dr. Tally, the first African American to lead this district. You've been recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards for your effective governance. Please continue this arc of leadership, trailblazing, and excellence. I ask the District 204 Board of Education to lead in this space. Stop this practice of ticketing students and support the passage of HB 2502 and SB 1519.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda and superintendent report. We will start with the superintendent report, Dr. Tally.
Ms. Donahue, members of the Board of Education, Indian Prairie Community, on Tuesday, March 18th, Indian Prairie Education Foundation held its Inspire Breakfast fundraiser. It was an opportunity to share with the community what IPF does for the benefit of our students, staff, and our greater community. I want to praise Dr. Trudy Ranson, Executive Director of IPF, and Ms. Heidi Holm, Development Coordinator for IPF, and all the IPF Board members for a wonderful breakfast. This year, our entire Board of Education was one of only 46 districts in the state to receive governance recognition status. Additionally, specific members of the board are being recognized by the Illinois Association of School Boards through their Leadership Recognition Program. These members are recognized for the individual time and effort devoted to learning and leadership activities. So Ms. Susan Demming, Annual Merit Award.
Thank you.
Ms. Lori Donahue, Distinguished Board Leader. Mr. Justin Carubis, Distinguished Board Leader. And Mr. Mark Rising, Annual Merit Recognition. There is still time for parents to complete the Five Essential Survey. This survey, which is given each year, provides staff, students, and parents with the opportunity to provide feedback on the schools where their children attend. In order for a school to receive a report about parents' thoughts, a school needs 20% of its parents to complete the survey. The majority of our schools are now sitting at or above 20%. However, there are six schools still below the 20% threshold. I applaud Still, Middle School, Graham Elementary, White Eagle, and McCarty Elementary Schools with more than 40% of its parents completing the surveys. You have until Friday to finish the surveys, so please fill those out. Now, I would like to ask the board to approve the appointment of Ms. Anne Dragos as the new Principal of STEPS effective July 1, 2025. Ms. Dragos will be replacing Ms. Kim Maloney, who's retiring as of June 30th. Ms. Dragos is coming to us from St. Charles District 303 where she serves as the Special Education Department Chairperson. She has been in the role since 2020. Before that role, she was a vocational coordinator and transition specialist for eight years. Ms. Dragos shared how it is important to establish trust and relationship with students, staff, and families. She talked about keeping lines of communication open and has had experiences with moving a program from one location to another. She is looking forward to the opportunity. I would also like the Board of Education to approve the appointment of Dr. Sarah Mumm as the new Director of Research and Assessment effective July 1. Dr. Mumm will be replacing Mr. Charles Sprandell, who is returning, who's retiring. Dr. Mumm is joining us from the Kaimlyn School District where she is the Director of Educational Services. She has been in her current role for the last 22 years. She was also a former Director of Instructional Technology and has taught first and second grades. She has had extensive work with creating strategic plans and evaluating the implementation of those plans. She has spent time evaluating programs within the school system, determining the return on investment, and she has also worked with school leadership in helping them use data to support instructional programs in the school. She is very excited about the opportunity of joining our district. Both of these ladies are here tonight. Ms. Donahue, I'll now turn the meeting back to you.
All right. I need a motion to approve Ms. Dragos for our leadership of our STEPS program.
I move that the Board of Education approves Anne Dragos as Principal of STEPS as presented.
I second.
Is there any discussion? Michelle, will you please take a roll?
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Dimming.
Aye.
Ms. Fostick.
Yes.
Mr. Karubus.
Yes.
And Ms. Donahue.
Yes. Motion has approved. Congratulations. You can come up to the microphone and say a few words.
Yeah, introduce if you brought anyone here. Yeah, my name is Annie Dragish. Thanks so much for having me here tonight. I brought my mom today, Mary. My husband and son couldn't make it. They're preparing for the IHSA Drama Competition this weekend, so they're headed down for that. But no, thank you just so much for this opportunity. I'm beyond excited. Transition is a very niche position to work in, and it is my life's work, and it's just really where I want to be. This is a unicorn position. I think it's the best job in the world. I'm so proud to have been selected, and it's just, it's going to be a privilege and an honor to serve these students, these families, and this community. So, thank you so much for putting your trust in me. I will make you proud.
You're welcome. Now, I need a motion to approve the appointment of Dr. Sarah Mum as the new Director of Research and Assessment.
Make a motion that the Board of Education approve Dr. Sarah Mum as Director of Research and Assessment as presented.
I second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Dimming.
Aye.
Mr. Karubus.
Yes.
Ms. Fostick.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations.
I would like to thank the Board and administration throughout the whole process. I felt so inspired and motivated and truly like I was already at home. I can't tell you July is not going to come quick enough. I am beyond excited to join the team, and I've already had things rolling through my mind of a thousand questions and ideas. I'm excited to have my son Aiden here with me and my husband Matt. My daughter is at Grand Valley State currently studying to be a teacher. She just got her first student teaching placement, so we're excited to have her start in kindergarten next fall, so we'll see. But thank you very much. I cannot wait to be a part of the team, so thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that was all our excitement for the night, all these nice appointments and things. We are now moving to our consent agenda. I need approval for Consent Agenda Items F through M.
I move that the Board of Education approve Consent Agenda Items F through M as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, Michelle, will you please call the roll?
Ms. Fostick.
Yes.
Ms. Gents.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Mr. Karubus.
Yes.
And Ms. Dimming.
Aye.
The motion passes. All right. Now, we will have a presentation from Dr. Mike Purcell regarding high school course updates.
He's waiting for his boss.
Good evening, Board of Education. Dr. Tally, thank you very much for the opportunity to come and speak to you this evening. Very excited to share some updates the high school teams have been working on and glad to bring those to you this evening. All of the courses I've shared to you tonight are being proposed for the 25, 26 school year. Some, as you see, will have resources that are attached to them, and others will not, but wanted to provide you updates on all of them. Accordingly, this presentation will focus on Board Policy 640, which is Curriculum Development, so there's some revisions and some additions to work that we've been doing in the past, and then resource adoption. This work is tightly aligned to our strategic plan, primarily related to Priority One, Objective Two, to provide all students with high-quality curriculum and instruction to meet and exceed standards and/or demonstrate greater-than-predicted growth on standardized As I said, I have a series of courses to share with you this evening. Those are listed here. French II, Advanced Placement Biology, Advanced Placement U.S. History, Advanced Placement Environmental Science, Criminal Law, and History of the World Through Media. As a reminder, the courses that are reviewed and updated follow the process that involves department chairs, building and district leaders, and school instructional leadership teams. The courses are also reviewed and updated according to the Curriculum Review Plan. This plan was last shared with the Board by Dr. Lee last summer, and we'll continue to update that as it becomes kind of annually. The priorities are alignment to standards and alignment between schools. There's a continuous focus on student achievement outcomes as laid out in the strategic plan and readiness for college and career. This work always starts with us having two things on the table. That's the Portrait of a Graduate and our culturally responsive instruction kind of platform. So those are two things that, no matter what the project is, those are the things that are on the table, literally. I like this visual. It gives a nice kind of view of the work that we do. Starts with reviewing the needs that we have, and then we begin to design and develop what that might look like, and then either pilot or implement that work, and then ongoing review happens, right? So we're kind of at the, on the design and develop, and we've got enough development to come and share with you kind of the exciting work, right? So it's the step between the steps, I suppose. Onto the exciting courses that we have here. First is French II. As you recall, Dr. Chisholm and I here just about a year ago to share with you the great work that our French I team is doing. The French II course has actually some of the same members and is really built on the work that the French I team is doing, building on the themes, the grammar, and the vocabulary. The units are listed there and really kind of fall under two big themes. One is contemporary life, and the other is global challenges. Each of these is a unit that kind of relates to those two themes. Those five units will kind of fall throughout the school year, through the year. Those two themes I highlight because they're also things that are highlighted in our AP French curriculum. So this really does provide that valuable vertical alignment between classes that allow students that choose to advance to that level already to kind of be learning along those themes. Throughout the course, students will learn about different aspects of the French world, including various regions of France and other French-speaking countries like Haiti. They'll build their French vocabulary, learn grammar structures like reflexive verbs and prepositions with the infinitive. The team is proposing a resource to support their work. It is the second in the series that we're using in French I. They are very excited about the resource that they have and want to continue kind of partnering with this vendor to work with our French II students. They found it particularly valuable in getting at all the modalities of language learning, of reading, writing, speaking, and listening, and some great resources, both in the instructional materials and then in the assessment materials as well. As listed here, the resource would be for both a physical textbook and a six-year digital license. That package will be about eighty-six thousand dollars for the term of that agreement. The next few slides are related to advanced placement courses. The first of these is the Advanced Placement Biology. For each of these, the slides you'll see posted up what the College Board calls the Course Exam Description. So the Course Exam Description, or CEDs, are really the blueprint that the College Board gives us. What I put up there is the names of the units themselves, straight out of that, a little cut and paste for you to kind of see those. But obviously, there's a whole lot more that goes into each of these classes. Spend a little time going into those this evening. In addition to the units of study that you see here in front of you, the course explores, this Advanced Placement Biology course explores science practices related to concept explanation, visual representation, questioning, and methods, representing and describing data, statistical tests, and data analysis, and argumentation. Some really big things that cross-cut across all different sciences and even into other areas of academics. The course also looks at the following big ideas that are in, each of these are in almost every unit. Evolution, energetics, information stores and transmission, and systems interaction. The team is very excited to kind of move on with a new resource to support this work, and we're proposing the Biology for the AP course written by Morris. It's published by BFW. This textbook, each of these you'll hear, we're looking at textbooks and the six-year digital is sort of a standard contract to partner with these, and that would be in a little bit more than eighty-five thousand dollars for that agreement. The next is another AP Science course. This is environmental science, follows the same process in terms of development. We really align these with the scope and sequence to the AP Course Exam Descriptions. We spend a lot of time with the teachers, not only looking at resources to support that work, but really sharing and coming together and sharing instructional practices. The teachers do a great job, and sometimes our AP classes, those professional learning teams are pretty small, right? It's sometimes one, sometimes two teachers, and to be able to kind of hear what's going on in other schools and cool labs and great instructional activities, this is a great time for them to get together and share those things. With that, they also look at resources to support that work. This class has these units here, has some of the very same science practices that we talked about in AP Biology, like concept explanation, visual representation, data analysis, but also looks at things like scientific experiments, mathematical routines, and environmental solutions. Bless you. The course follows big ideas that cut across units, including energy transfer, interaction between earth systems, interactions between different species in the environment, and sustainability. This AP Environmental class I get particularly excited about. This is one of our AP classes. I talk to you about this every year or so, that we really look for those opportunities to talk about AP classes that are more accessible than others. It's not easy by any means, but unlike an AP Calculus class or an AP Physics class, doesn't require as much background knowledge to access. It requires an interest and a work ethic. And so this becomes, for many students, if they only take one or two AP classes with us, there's a pretty good chance this is one of them. So really looked at resources that would support that, knowing that as part of our reality as well. So with that, the team is recommending and bringing to you a book called Environmental Science for the AP Course, written by Friedland, who is a really well-renowned author in this space, published by BFW. This is a little more expensive because this is a class that more kids take, right? Just need more materials. So the cost for textbooks and six-year digital is a little more than a hundred and four thousand dollars. The third of our Advanced Placement classes are Advanced Placement U.S. History class. Really runs through the same process. Really, we're, was excited to work with the AP U.S. History team. They've done a really good job in that space of sharing some great instructional practices, really talking about how to make this a class that appeals to a whole lot of learners, because this is a class that also meets a graduation requirement for U.S. History, and really looking at how do we construct both the resources that are available through College Board and something that we may be able to bring in to make this a class that kids can take and then take with them as they move on to their next stage in life. This class lays out their units and time periods, which is not super informative, but wanted to share with you, as I do with the other classes, some of the kind of background that goes along with that, that really looks at the, all of history through three frames. One is historical thinking skills, one is reasoning processes, and the other is themes. The historical thinking skills, the College Board emphasizes our development and processes, sourcing and situation, claims and evidence in the sourcing, contextualization, making connections, and argumentation. The, you know, one of the things that I'm very excited about is a lot of those themes are the same kind of social studies thinking themes that we brought to you in other social studies classes that we talk about, right? Kind of claim evidence, reasoning, context, making connections are things that kind of run through our classes and that they're also kind of validated by outside sources. Gets very exciting to me. Reasoning for, the reasoning process talks about comparison, causation, and continuity and change. And there's also themes that kind of go across this, and really, it really looks at these themes over time. So these themes sort of emerge in different units over time, and we really highlight things like American and national identity, work exchange and technology, geography and the environment, migration and settlement, politics and power, America and the world, American regional culture, and social structure. So really looking at all of those themes over time. Now, each of those themes may not be evident in each unit, but all of them repeat several times throughout the course. The team came together to really look at a resource that would support students, again looking at how do we support all learners to be in this space and make this a class that would be inviting to students, particularly since it's a graduation requirement, and came to recommending a book called Fabric of a Nation by Stacy Nellington, and the cost for that textbook and a six-year digital licensing that goes along with that is about a hundred and eight thousand dollars. Moving out of the AP space, wanted to provide the Board updates on two social studies classes that you may recall, that you approved very early fall this year, and wanted to give you an update on the curriculum work that's happening with those, and we have some resource conversation that is attached to that as well. The two classes are Criminal Law and the History of the World Through Media. Each of these courses are one semester courses. They are available to students in grades ten, eleven, and twelve, and were really developed so that they would be the same at each school and grounded in these things here, right? The culturally responsive instructional practices we talked about earlier, Illinois State Standards for Learning, and a real focus in both of those classes on the media literacy standards, clearly more in that History of the World Through Media class, but there's a piece of that in each one. And what I like about both of these classes also is we really, in the sequence of our learning, we, our graduation requirements and social studies are the geography class freshman year, whether it be Human Geography or AP Human, and then U.S. History class, whether that be a regular U.S. History, American Society, or AP U.S. History, and then a government class to follow that up. And some of our students leave our freshman social studies class not quite ready to take on U.S. History. So really wrote these classes with that in mind, to really look at what are those social science skills that students need to bridge that gap, but also those student and executive functioning skills that would benefit them as well. So in both of these classes, you'll see, we'll see pieces of that being written in. Those are also good for all kids, right? So, but just a particular focus, because we know that there's a group of kids for whom that's a real need, and wanted to put that in there. This Criminal Law class, well, I had a chance to talk about this last week because we're really excited about it. When it comes to new classes, we talk about two things. We talk about, we did surveys with students and staff to say, "What do you, what do you want to learn about, right? What's important to you? What are you interested in?" And then we also took, the other data point we looked at was student, student survey data from school links, talks about what are your career interests? And what do you want to do when you, when you leave us? What are you planning on studying? What are you planning on doing for a career? And criminal justice and working in the legal system was a big one for us, and it's a place where we have some coursework, but probably need a little bit more. So the, we're really excited to kind of build out that pathway for kids, and that's something that's in process. We do have a business law class. We do have a Business Law class that, that's been on the books for quite a while. We're really excited to see how those two classes come together, right? There's a little bit of work to be done to see how those are, those can be companions to each other so that they can, we got, want to build this up so that we could take, a student can choose to take one class or the other, and some may choose to take both. So we're kind of working through the, the details of that over the next, next few months to kind of smooth out that process. And that's going to, a lot of teacher involvement in that conversation and just making sure that all gets built up. So that can be a great experience for kids and build a really robust pathway for students to understand the criminal, both the legal and the criminal justice system. The units of that class are listed here, Crime Scene Investigation, Criminal Trial, Criminal Justice and Prisons. The last unit will be a little more of an open inquiry for, for kids to take a topic of, that came up in those first three units that's really of interest and do some, practice some of those research skills and some of those presentation skills in a topic that's really of their choosing. So, so really excited to, to bring that class on and wanted to provide the board some updates on that, what we came to you in the, in the fall about. This class is asking for a resource to support that work. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of vocabulary that goes along with that, a lot of, you know, want to make sure that those kids have something at, at their fingertips. So the, the book is called Introduction to Criminal Justice by Cole Smith and DeJong. That's published by Cengage and similarly looking at both physical books and digital licenses for that, for that class. The final course I have for you this evening is called History of the World Through Media. Again, as we talked about before, really looking at this being a bridge class, particularly in the history space, to help kids become US History-ready, right? So, so super excited about this, really looking at content skills like cause and effect, contextualization, right? Some of the things you hear at all levels. And then the executive functioning student skills, like annotation, supporting claims with evidence and reasoning, those kinds of things. Really build those skills for students to become US History-ready. And then we also know this is a great elective and it could be a high-interest thing that students just take because they like it, right? And maybe some kids have already taken US History and I just want more. And I want to do that at, at a, at a level that maybe not be an AP level. And I want to just, I want to do it because I like it. This unit has three, three units. One is Historical Accuracy, kind of how stories are told. Makes me think of Hamilton, right? Who tells the stories? And then what happens when cultures collide and does change always mean progress? So really looking at this, not, you know, I think there's, it's easy to kind of think of this as a, as a film course, but they're very much kind of not going that way, direction with this. There'll certainly be some, probably more kind of portions of film media, but really looking at a very multimedia presentation of this, podcasts and, and film and TV and, you know, infographics and all, all of those pieces, and how do they kind of go one off the other? So very excited to get the team, and, and we just think that's a great, another great student skill. We talk about media literacy, really be able to kind of parse that apart and starting with that first piece of historical accuracy, looking at sources for validity and, and really looking for point of view and those kinds of pieces. So we're, we're very excited about that class. So, you know, I appreciate the time this evening. The high school teams are very proud of this work and look forward to these courses, serving a variety of students. Our next steps between now and the next regularly scheduled board meeting is to allow some time for the courses to be reviewed. It's our intention to bring these for approval on April seventh. We'll also have the resources discussed here tonight. There, it's a big stack tonight, so I didn't bring them all with me. They're, they're, they're in my office, but, but, but they'll be here for review for anyone who'd like to come take a look at them. Between now, now and then, it would be also our intention to bring those to the April seventh meeting for approval as well. The timeline on this is really so we can get that approval in April is the intention, so that we can start and do some professional learning before the school year lets out. Particularly when it comes to that digital platform. Anyone who's kind of worked in a new, a new digital space knows that sometimes needs a lot of onboarding, right? And certainly not something we want to be doing on April fourteenth, the day before schools, or August fourteenth, the day before school starts, right? So want to have some time for teachers to be able to get, kind of dig into that before that goes along. And then, you know, schedule any collaboration that needs to happen to kind of polish up some things like the law class and some other things that we have going between now and the beginning of school. So with that, I appreciate your time this evening. If you have questions, I would love to answer them.
Ms. Fosdick.
All right, I'll start by saying thank you. I got a good kick out of slide six, the fact that the French textbook is called OK.
OK.
So I'm assuming that because it's being recommended, the material is more than OK.
They're better than OK, yeah.
That they really enjoy it. Glad to hear that. I did appreciate your brief explanation about why some course updates cost more than others, both for, as a reminder for board members, but for community members too, because there's a significant difference, I think, between some of those course updates.
For sure.
I'm really particularly excited about that, the curiosity-building piece in the Criminal Law course, where students are able to kind of explore their own research. That's a skill that they'll use in anything they do after high school, whether or not it's a formal research study, being exposed to that research and given, being given a chance to practice, I think, is really valuable. So I'm very excited to hear that. And then finally, I wanted to know if it's possible to audit the history of the media, this History of, History of the World Through Media class.
Are you asking for a friend?
I would like to take it, yeah. I'm asking for a friend, exactly. Yeah, it sounds great. I'm, I think having these, these classes available for our students is great, so thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Guns. I will just echo some of what Board Member Fosdick said, where it is, it's very exciting to see the, the, the different courses, the different thought processes really, and I love that it is a mix of AP and non-AP. And as you said, that it is AP that's a little more every-student friendly as we're trying to, you know, encourage students to take AP courses that they feel comfortable with, obviously, and feel like they can excel in. So I really do appreciate that. I get, I was just looking, and I also actually wanted to very much say I appreciate the fact that we are now having across every single high school consistent academics. So I just had one question, and it was more just a clarifying thing. The Criminal Law and the History, I know the class that Board Member Fosdick wants to take too, the History of the World Through Media, have they started now or are they starting in the fall? Or they have already started after we approve them?
Great question. So that class was board-approved in the fall.
Right.
So students began enrolling in January.
Okay.
We'll start teaching it next year.
Okay, perfect. All right, excellent. Thank you, no, honestly, thank you for this. It's all really exciting, and if auditing is a thing, I think I might be joining Board Member Fosdick there as well.
Mr. Rising.
Just one question. I mean, I think I know the answer already, but I need to ask it. Regarding the curriculum materials for the three AP courses, we are doing better than we ever have with AP testing for our students across the district. So of course, I take pause when we change the curriculum in three AP courses. I'm assuming that the curriculum that we chose for each of these AP courses is College Board-recommended. It's one of their preferred curriculum materials that they recommend that aligns to the standards for those AP courses. Could you just confirm that for me, because I just want to ensure that?
Yeah, so, yes and. So the, the curriculum is revised by the College Board, right? So they, they lay out the standards and the units that you saw from the CEDs there, right? So we, we ensure that our courses align to, to that, right? And then we choose resources that do that. What you may see is that each of those groups who work independently of each other all chose a book from the same vendor. That vendor really specializes in AP and what they would probably tell you. Each of them is one of the, not the only, but one of the things that they really like about it is that it's written in the AP class. And it's, I don't have to kind of sift and sort and kind of, kind of move from one thing to the other. There are other great things about it, some of the digital platform's good, some of the other things are good, but it's like really tied to the AP class. And, and particularly in, in some areas more than others, it's, it's accessible because it is. It's not a college textbook, it's an AP textbook.
Great.
So that's probably a little more answer you're looking for, but.
Yeah, no, no, I appreciate the, the extra at the end. So I, I just wanted to ensure that, that's all I had. Thanks.
Ms. Jane.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell.
Thank you.
So I, I noticed in all of the three AP courses, you men, you mentioned that the team shared high-quality instructional practices between teachers and schools. And I know if I were to look at the textbooks, I might get a better idea about this, but could you just tell us a little bit about what made these particular textbooks stand out? Like, are there any unique tech features that are being offered in these digital textbooks that we haven't seen before, just for the parents and for us to know? What are some of the highlights of these textbooks, I guess?
Yeah, great question. So each of them are different in their way, right? So, so the, the, one of the things that they all have in common is what I shared with Mr. Rising's questions. They're all written really closely to the Course and Exam Description so that, that like the units follow one another. The, when I look for topic one point four in the, in the digital resource, it's because it's topic one point four in the Course and Exam Description. So there's a lot of alignment there. That's really nice, right? But that's not enough. I mean, that's, that's a great start. It's, it's a, it's a nice to have, right? But what we found in each of those, and, and the teams would report out, is that we look at, at, at the very top, we look at three things, right? We look at, one, what do the teachers think is best for them and for kids, right? The second is the digital integration, that, that we're not going to spend, that, that it works, and we're not going to spend class time managed, having teachers manage that, right? And then the third is finance, right? Is to make sure that it's a competitive bid and that comes in at, or lower than other vendors, you know, do. So, so that's the top line, right? And then when we look at it, typically, we, we make a rubric for each of these. We sit with the team and say, really, what is it that we're looking for in this? Because they do have other things. You talk about an environmental science class, they already have some labs that they've been doing over time, they align, right? So maybe their priority isn't getting new labs, right? But it's really getting, I want something that has a readability that really matches what my kids are, particularly for an accessible Advanced Placement class, right? So the US History class really wanted something that was, had both good visuals and, and a reading level that, that could help them. They felt, like that team, for instance, felt very confident in the resources they had and the resources that they can get through College Board AP classroom, but needed some things in a primary resource that had a couple of things. One is primary source documents, right? So like real American history documents that were embedded inside of that. Two, had some assessment things that they could either adapt or adopt for the, to kind of writing assessments for a classroom. And then the third was great visuals, in addition to obviously being historically accurate and, and other things that kind of go along with that.
Yeah, thank you for like those examples. And for the US AP, US History course, if approved, would that be integrated in the summer or next fall?
So we don't teach the AP US History class over the summer. So it would be for, all of these would be for the fall of twenty-five, twenty-six.
And for the electives, is that something being offered each semester in all of our high schools?
So.
Maybe, maybe not?
Yes.
Okay.
So the, the way that we register, students don't choose which semester they take it because there's obviously a lot of logistics into kind of creating a master's schedule. So typically, yes, sometimes if there's like, if there's only two sections, we may put them both for semester. I mean, like there's a little, there's kind of yes with an asterisk, you know? So we don't restrict it to just one semester by.
It's on demand.
Policy, but yeah, sometimes demand, just, and just logistics kind of make that happen.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Dumbing.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. Slide four. And I appreciate the opportunity to share the priorities that go into any time that we are looking at our curriculum decisions. Very much appreciate that and, and hope that the community knows how everything drives down from the strategic plan, which was so critical. Can you share for me a little bit, I may have chosen the, hold on for me just a second. There was, can you share a little bit of how culturally responsive instruction is embedded throughout? Just an idea of what that looks like throughout our courses? And I know it would be different for, for each, but can you just give an example?
Yeah, so, so there's some great examples. So I'm going to talk about one that probably is counter to it, and, and it was, it's our French class, right? So it was really important, and, and I, some of it is, I think that, you know, we put, put on, we literally take that, like a two-page culturally responsive piece, and we put it on the table. And it's part of our conversations, it's here, right? So, so, and one of the things that helps us to do, it just centers us in the work. We have that and the portion of graduate which is kind of always sitting there, right? And, and what, one of the things that came out, a great example of this, is that one of the things that they really like about this resource as opposed to others is it represents French-speaking cultures that are not in France. So, so I think that's just one of those examples of, that was really important to them, that they had that, right? That the, the AP Environmental Science one has some scientists in, like in each unit, and the scientists don't all look alike, right? So I think there's some of those pieces, right? So it's, it's hard to say, hey, let's make sure this thing becomes more culturally responsive, right? What you want to do is just, is integrate it into the capital W work, right? So by having it kind of at the center of the table, that's how we're able to do those things. And then those opportunities come up and say, no, this is important, and that becomes a differentiator. Or, hey, as we're doing that lesson, let's make sure that we have that, this is where we can really talk about context and point of view and say, this is, this is a place where we can, in the US History class, make sure that we have multiple perspectives represented, those kinds of things.
I love those, those examples because it speaks to truly embedding and that it's not, there's just such a collaboration of things that contribute to the success of the, of the course and the classroom. And, and those examples, I really appreciate. Thank you so much for sharing a little bit about Criminal Law versus B-Law. I did want to know, both courses though, and you kind of intimated this, both courses will continue in the opportunity a student might potentially take both courses as, as a social studies? I know one lands right now on the business side, correct?
Yep, you, you got it, you did it exactly right. So one is a social studies class, the Criminal Law class, really kind of talks about the criminal justice system as a social studies point of view, right? And then the Business Law class, which we've had for a while, really talks about torts and contracts and those pieces really comes at it from a business point of view. Now, we don't have a, an Intro to Law class that is a prerequisite for those. So, so each of those can, could be a class that a student may take independent of the other. So there'll be some overlap between the two, because we got to make sure the kid knows what a law is and what a judge is, you know, some of the, the basics, right? So, but truth is that that happens in a lot of, not a lot, but it happens in lots of places, right? That, that the first couple of weeks of Algebra II is like, let's make sure you remember Algebra I, right? And so we have, you know, that overlap is not completely new. And, and to hear those things from a new point of view can only be, benefit students who have a real interest. And if you're taking both, you probably have a real interest, right? So it'll be beneficial. We got, we got a little bit of work to do. We got to polish up the details of that. So, but we got to, we, we needed to kind of take a big step forward before we even knew what the problem was to solve. And but we're here and we'll get it all kind of figured out.
So both, and it sounds like both departments are going to be working together in order. And that's great, because B-Law and Criminal Law are so vastly different.
Right.
So as our two attorneys on the board could share. Last question is, I wanted to understand a little bit on the Criminal Law, the Criminal Justice and Prisons. Can you share a little bit about what that unit looks like for me, please?
Yeah, so really looking at the prison system and recidivism and, and some of the pieces that go along with what happens in the criminal justice after the trial ends, right? And, and what's the, talk about plea bargaining and, and, and the whole, the whole prison system. And I think there's a, one of the themes, the things the team is excited about is that there's a lot of kind of human rights conversations that kind of come along with that, right? And, and those pieces. So, so the, the team's excited to kind of make that part of the study, is looking at not just the, the stuff you see on TV, right? And, and the, and the trials and the, and the lawyers and the deals, right? But also, these are real people, that, the real consequences, and, and what does that look like at that end too? And, and truth is that there's also, that space of criminal justice is a, is a big employer, right? So making students aware of that part of it too, to say, you know, if you're interested in this as a career, which a lot of kids are telling us that there is, there's this other portion. other portion of it that probably isn't as well-known.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carubas.
So overall, I support the course provisions. I love the direction. Normally I'd ask you to increase the speed of this, but you already go way too fast. Looking at this unit 11, you kind of go to your audience. So you've listed here like units. Those are just dates. Those aren't really informative to us, but then you told us about all the richness that goes into those dates and, you know, the multi-variable dynamic stuff. So that was very appreciative. I, I think one of the benefits, one of the challenges I think that the district should accept is on our communication through the course catalog and how this gets communicated out to the parents and the students. Looking at the current course catalog for AP US history, it says, this course is American history, in American history, is designed to provide students with the analytical skills and factual knowledge necessary to deal with critical, critically with the issues and materials in this first-year college-level American history course. It goes on to say, this course satisfies the American history graduation requirement and students who successfully completed this should be able to pass the AP test. That doesn't really tell me much about these units, about the, the dynamic stuff that you were talking about. You know, for, for talking about teaching to the standards, are we talking about teaching to the test? What, what is in there? And it's not telling me, you know, we're going to use this book or here's a link to the, the standards, you know, here's a look, link to the unit. So I think we've, we have the information. I don't think it'd be a big jump to include that information. And I always try to side on the, you know, be on the side of us communicate more. I think this isn't a big ask of administration that's going to be, oh, I gotta spend a lot of time doing this, but it, the description is so brief. If you were to tell me, what am I going to learn if I take this class? I'm not entirely sure what it is. So I'd like to see our, as you go through and review these things, I would like to, administration to just take a critical look at our course catalog.
Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Lots of interesting changes and updates. It's really important that we continue to always look and refresh our curriculum and our materials that are supporting our courses. So thank you for keeping an eye on that and continue to do that. And it sounds like some very cool new classes too. So thank you.
Excellent. Thank you.
All right. Our last item is legislative advocacy and Board of Education update. And we had Ms. Guns at the national conference this week.
Yes, thank you. I, I want to say thank you first for the ability to go to COSBA. And for anyone still watching, it, that is the consortium of, yes, state school board associations. So COSBA is such a unique conference because it is state school boards presenting a lot of the time or superintendents. And I know every year there are more and more states that join COSBA. So the presentations I found very interesting, especially ones that were from totally different areas like Wyoming, where there are things probably we would never necessarily put into effect. But two of my biggest takeaways, I will say, from it was in a family engagement presentation I did. They really showed the positive difference that family engagement makes on a student's achievement. And along with, you know, different ideas on how to do it, I, I'm, I'm not going to, you know, go into super detail with that, but just something to always, I feel like, keep in mind and take with us is the importance of that too, as we talk about, you know, the amazing staff we have, obviously amazing administration and everything, just more ways to engage families. I think that's something every school board could really improve on. And then AI. I, I loved the AI presentation that I went to and she really did make a wonderful point of it is happening, it has been happening, you really do have to just get on board or get left behind because every day almost there are advances. And the one thing from her presentation I thought was very interesting was the idea that 65% of kindergartners currently, kindergartners, the jobs they will be getting as adults are not even around yet. So, you know, yeah, I, that kind of blew my mind a little bit of where we don't even know what a lot of our children will be doing as adults. So it is, it's a fascinating idea and I ironically was using AI to help transcribe all my presentations. So she convinced me, I'm, I'm on board. But, no, and I wanted to just thank everyone again and give you guys just the update of the new executive director who will be taking over on July 1st. It is Dr. Kathy McFarland and she is from the Ohio State Board of Education. And she's taking over for anyone that was not sure, from Dr. Bertrand from Illinois, and he will be retiring June 30th. She seems wonderful, she's very enthusiastic and she is very ready to keep kind of help leading all the different state school boards, local school boards through these ever-changing times.
Well, thank you very much for spending the time going to the conference. It's always very beneficial to hear what all the other states are doing and hear the discussions there and we appreciate that you went and.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I will share my copious notes with all of you.
Did anyone else have any other items for this topic? Okay. All right. Then I need a motion and a second to recess to executive session.
I'll make a, you got it? I got it. I'll make a motion to recess into executive session for the appointment, employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees, specific individuals who serve as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, educational setting or specific volunteer of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing that testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee, a specific individual who serves as an independent contractor in a park, recreational, educational setting, or a volunteer of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity, however, a meeting to consider the increase in compensation of a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local wage, government wage increase transparency act may not be closed and entered into the open, public and posted, held accordance with that act litigation when an action against affecting or on behalf of a particular public body has been filed impending before a court or administrative tribunal, or when the public body finds that an action is probable imminent, in which case the basis for the finding should be recorded and entered into the minutes of a closed meeting.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Okay. Michelle, will you please call it roll?
Mr. Rising.
Yes.
Ms. Demming.
Hi.
Mr. Carubas.
Yes.
Ms. Guns.
Yes.
Ms. Donahue.
Yes.
Ms. Jane.
Yes.
And Ms. Fosdick.
Yes. The motion is approved. We are recessed to executive session.